Gibson? No, yeah, so Gibson ain't got nothing on this fellow.
Okay.
I won't.
That is Jim Anderson, isn't it?
Yesterday I called when I ditched Doug out. They've been coming by to dig it out.
Yeah. No doubt, yeah, yeah. I tell you though, we're gonna think of more meetings, uh, a meeting with all the folks on those roads, but I'm getting more and more calls.
My mind was messed up. It got rained out Friday.
Renee, I don't have to ask any questions today, do I? Me too.
Good morning. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors to order July 15th. Mr. Craig Slay, would you have reification for us, please?
Father, as we come before you, we consider what a privilege it is to serve our fellow man. I thank you, Father, that these gentlemen have sacrificed and given up their time to be servants of this community. Father, I pray that you will help us all to be mindful of our responsibility to others, Father, to be mindful of our responsibility to you. With your will, Father, they will be pleasing to you. And, Father, the freedoms that we enjoy to assemble here are paid for at a very high price. Father, thank you for the men and women who have sacrificed and their families who have sacrificed so that we might stand here today and conduct the business as we can. Father, thank you for their sacrifice, and I pray to keep it in honor in the Christ's name again.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. This time we have public comments. Dr. Jim.
It was quick.
It was.
Good morning.
Good morning. Jim Anderson, Rankin County resident. And as chairman of the advisory committee, we'll consider the filling of the manager's position as soon as we can. The summer's moving by pretty quickly. We have provided some job descriptions and three resumes for y'all's consideration. And I would suggest that we use the funds that are left for the, from the previous manager that we had to hire somebody to finish out the summer before the end of this year. Go forward and get this done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Do you have, anybody have any question? I believe there's some questions that were, last meeting we talked about different ones. Couple of, I don't know, you did, I think you had a couple of questions, and now'd be a good time for you standing here.
Well, and, you know, a couple of questions I did have, I just haven't been able to get with, you know, some of the people I wanted to. Looking at the brochure you gave us. And just to make sure, before I did ask all the questions, I want to make sure we got all the questions, so we, so we could have just one complete. And I think we got you coming back on the work session, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, we need to. I wanted to make one thing clear about that pamphlet we handed you was not an answer device.
Right, right.
It was just a recommendation that we could.
Correct.
It was pictures and data that we compiled to get together for y'all, just to give you some ideas on how, how to do that.
Correct.
Mainly for Hoopie. So we have a job description? I thought y'all. In, in that packet with the resumes. And we had, our committee had, Jared and Hoopie were on, made those job descriptions and approved those through our committee.
I know, yeah, Hoopie was gone out of town, so we didn't want to have to do anything with him going out of town. Last week was kind of like a covey of quail moving around.
Sure.
So we really didn't have a lot of time to do anything from, because it's really just only been a week since we had the last meeting.
But we want to answer those questions that you asked about the last meeting.
Right.
And if there's any unanswered questions, we want to get to the bottom of that, so y'all can make an informed decision.
Right.
But we really need to get this going if we can.
Yes.
So are the questions in the nature of hiring somebody or about the facility itself?
I think in, in all general context, it's probably a few of both. You know, it's just, I did have some of the guys ask me. A manager throughout the county or, you know, going to just look at their recommendations, things like that, so, you know, about the facility. I know one question that I was looking in there about and clarified to me about, you know, if we have this open during the day, did you say all Rankin Countyans, they would just pull up and basically ride for free? Is that, I mean, that's just one of the.
Anybody that wants, that's a county resident that wants to come and ride, there are certain times that the building can be open. And they, the lights are left on for them, or Trish comes and opens it up for them. And they.
Right.
And a lot of these people make a living with these horses, and they, they ride for fun as well.
Right.
And kids don't have, you know, they go after school when they can and that kind of thing.
Right.
And they go, and we're not talking about charging the residents, no, for recreational practice or whatever. If there's an event, then all Rankin Canyon residents would be charged for an event if they're residents. If they're non-residents, they would charge, be charged.
Questions, I guess, because then we would have to have someone manned 24, I mean, not 24/7, but then we would get into a facility manager and how long they would be there and, you know, there's some certain questions on that.
Well, we have, we have a part-time manager now, and she's been doing that.
Right.
We had a full-time manager before. And my, my question is, we've had one already, we need another, and, you know, I don't know why we're having. Because our administrator has all that information at his hand of what we've been doing, and that's pretty much what we've been doing.
Right.
We're not changing anything except making recommendations on the fee schedule and that kind of thing. And we're really trying to kind of bring it in so there's time that can be easier for them to ride.
Well, like I said, I think that because Hoopie had gone out of town, we really haven't had time to sit down and just.
Do want to take.
Well, honestly, though, really, if you think the, some of the things that you're, the little things like that are things that even could be addressed after the fact, after the. I mean, those things are going to be things you're going to change or, I guess, critique throughout. It doesn't have to be something that's, I guess, worked out prior to, really, I mean, because even if you got a manager, you're going to wind up seeing things that you're going to need to change, or we're going to need to change to make things better.
Right.
One way or the other. So it's really not a, I guess, deal breaker, really. Along with a manager, and to tell you the truth, I just thought of that, a manager might give you some input after of things that need to be changed or things that you could do to make things more accommodating.
Right.
And hiring the right person that's emotionally involved and that really takes that building as their first priority, we're going to find a person that, that all those management decisions would be made. And you don't have to deal with it on a day-to-day basis.
Right.
And that's why we're on this committee, to try to help move that forward.
Right.
I would think even after the fact, he, she, whomever it may be, as well as Trish would be, it'd be a perfect time for them to give their input, because these are people that will be actually associated with it and actually help managing it and would know better than really we can. And work more efficiently.
You know, Jared, Greg's question is really valid. If we do put up a gate, you know, we are going to need to come up with a plan on how to deal with, you know, people just showing up or not.
Mm-huh.
So that's. That their open would be posted and noted, and the sheriff has said he would open and close the gates on those hours when they need to be, and also for the theme of building, they'll have to be, you know, security there too. So I think it's great that we're, so we were doing both, rather than how it is now. Anybody show up anytime of the day or night.
Right, right.
We would set it, set time. That's, that's.
How it kind of hours operate.
And the management personnel there. Right now, we have an open gate.
Yeah, some of that was not really clarified. I mean, it was, it was broad. That was some of the questions. I mean, there are certain, I guess, certain other ones, but what I'd like to do is, like I said again, with, and I know, I understand the timeliness of this, but I'm just, I guess I want to make sure that Hoopie and Craig look at everything, because. To make sure, I mean, I'm figuring by the end of the month, we should know something.
Let me, you know, and I'm not trying to drag this on, but it is more than just saying, okay, let's replace the person that was there. Because that person who was there, let's get into the dollars and cents, which is what my job is, is we paid that person $25,000 a year, period. We're not going to hire a manager, full-time manager out there for $25,000. We're not going to do these other things that we're doing without hiring a couple additional part.
Park rangers, whatever.
Park rangers, okay. Now, that would be contract labor, and that's about $10 an hour. But if we do this thing the way it, we're talking about, you're talking about having one of those people there some 14 hours a day, from, say, 10 o'clock in the morning till 10 or 12 at night.
Right.
Not, not the same person, you may. Dollars an hour for that 14 hours a day. That's $140 a day, seven days a week, basically, or maybe six days if you want to close it down totally, one day for maintenance or something like that. But that's on top of paying the money for the fence, those types of things. So it's not just straightforward, okay, let's take the $25,000. Go out and hire somebody.
Right.
There's more to what we want to do or what is being suggested than just doing that.
So you're looking, you're looking more of a cost analysis.
Well, I'm taking a look at a budget.
You bet, basically, that's.
Taking a look at a budget.
And that's what we're getting into is budget time right now, so we're really having to make some legitimate decisions on which, you know. Because that's going to be a board action, you know, on budgets.
Irregardless, we're still going to be, um.
Correct, but we.
I mean, you're going to have to have, if you had that building or another building or whatever, you still got the same issues as far as the budget goes.
Well, you do, but then, do you want to scale back any? Or, I mean, I can understand exactly what Hoopie's talking about.
Scale back is how?
Well, I mean, do you want three part-time people? You want. Been out for a full-time manager, you know, all that has to be going to play.
I'm for zero part-time people at the moment.
I mean, there you go, so, I mean, it's kind of.
Can't we just start with someone to take the role on and let's go from there?
You know, I'm not advocating this, but whenever you make these analysis, and please, I'm not advocating this, so don't, but I'm saying that, you know, one of the things that you got to always. Because anything we do is going to cost more money. So are we going to get something for that more money is what we've got to decide.
Well, clarify what you mean, nothing.
I mean, what, the whole problem, we think, is that.
Ma'am.
It hasn't been managed properly.
Well, I, I, I'm not arguing that.
Right.
I'm not saying that point at all. I, and that's the reason I preface my statement. Please understand, I'm not advocating this, but that's the starting point.
So we're starting, we're starting where we.
Then at the margin, you add on, what do you get for the increased?
Yes, that's some of the questions that I was, that I was taking, you know, basically, not trying to disregard this thing altogether, we just got to get with the board and Hoopie and let's, you know, let's come up with a strategy and a plan of action. And I, you know, just fast-tracking it, I think we need to make sure whenever we do this, we do it in the right way.
I'm totally with you there. We just have not gotten what, what the board needs and what the people that use it need with the present system we've got now.
Right. I understand.
Any other questions?
This time we have old business, July 3rd, 2014, July 7th, 2014, minutes approval. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. John Sullivan.
My regular two items, item A, petition to change the assessment, 2013 real property assessment rule.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
And item B, petition to adjust 2013 home state extension supplement rule.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Charles Parker, consulting engineer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
First item I have on the agenda is our early road extension project, and this morning I'm recommending approval of pay request number 10 in the amount of $84,775.97 to Joe McGee Construction Company, Inc.
So move.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Brown. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is our old-fanened road reconstruction project. This morning I'm recommending approval of pay request number 19 to Southern Rock LLC in the amount of $192,433.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The third and last item that I have on. Out of 468, they came to us wanting to revise their preliminary plat, and we had a meeting in here, Mr. Wilcox was present, and they turned in, and anyway, we saw no problem with the revisions that they were wanting to make in the preliminary plat. And they wanted to get that approved so they could proceed. This morning I'm recommending approval of the revised preliminary plat for Greenfield Ridge, which is a part of Greenfield Station. Parts 1H, 1I, and 1J.
So move. Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions?
Yeah, how many more of these areas they have to grow out there?
There's, in there, three more, three more or four more sections, basically.
Maybe four.
Yeah, four. Increasing in size. This one, this right here, this changed, correct me if I'm not right on this, the thoroughfare, basically, they took that thoroughfare out of there.
Yes.
Instead of a, like a. Over to 468.
They were concerned about speed on that, because it was basically a straight shot the way they had originally submitted it. Now, if you're coming off 468, you're going to go into the development, go past the clubhouse, and you're going to take a right and go around and come in, and you'll come back in up closer to the other road to the Noah.
Basically taking out a bypass. Understandably so, I can understand why they would want to do that, so.
Are the house sizes staying the same?
Um, they've already increased a little bit on one, on another part of it. They increased by about 200 square foot.
I believe that's correct.
And then the next one they're increasing, they're supposed to be increasing again.
Is that part of the plat to say they will, or is that just by their choice?
That was by their choice there.
Uh-huh.
It's going to be about the same.
That shows.
That's when I asked about their.
The location, the lots and the streets.
Yeah, this one's mainly just on the streets, right here, for the street.
So in other words, they have a lot of room to grow.
Two exits out of the city.
Yes, that's correct. There will be two.
It's just going to be a thoroughfare, it'll be a.
Correct.
That's correct. It won't be a straight shot from 468 up to Greenfield Circle.
Yeah.
And you'll come in and meander around. As long as we're still able to get emergency services to entry.
Yeah, we're, yes, oh, yeah, we did.
We'll have an entrance on Greenfield Circle, entrance on 468.
Yeah, we did want to ensure that we did have two exits out, so.
So what size one really building now?
Six, 14 to 16, wasn't it?
I'd have to look back, I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
They supposed to step one up then?
Right.
I don't think at some point some of them's 18. Step it on up.
Yep.
Good deal.
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Craig Slay, board attorney.
Oh, gosh. We couldn't just put this on the consent agenda? We really got to talk about this?
That's when you.
You guys may or may not be aware, but quickly, just, I don't want to trace too much ground, but I think a little bit of history would be helpful to us. Somewhere in the order of a couple of years back, there was an issue that came out through the Attorney General's office where an interpretation of a particular statute resulted in somewhat of a controversy. Regulating open and concealed carry weapons. And following that interpretation, it was a series of actions taken across the state by, typically by local. The subject matter of that AG's opinion. What came to light, what was not really clear, was the fact that Mississippi has never had any sort of regulation on the open carry of weapons. In other words, that's always been a Second Amendment right, and continues to be this day, to this day. What was being addressed through the local, the attempts at. Open carry of weapons in certain situations, this room here being a primary example. And so in response to a lot of that, you guys and I worked together to come up with an ordinance that we felt like was reasonable. We identified about 15, 10 to 15 locations where we wanted to. Over the open display of weapons. We tried to be accommodating in that we exempt, completely exempted enhanced concealed carry permit holders. Those are the folks that have gone through the extra step of getting training, not just a carry permit, but extra training that allows them to be able to carry their weapon in concealed fashion in different places. Always been the law that open carry is authorized and allowed. It has also been the law that you are required to get a permit in order to conceal carry a weapon. That's still the law. If you want to conceal carry a weapon, you still have to have a permit. Open carry, have that. Concealed carry, you need a permit. Seal carriers, to be able to take their weapons into virtually anywhere in the state, there are a couple of spots where it's prohibited. Courtroom during session, I think may be one of those. And, you know, and it's interesting that the law is, it also says that they can't carry them into places that are known hazardous. One of the examples is a house of ill repute. So we have some oddities in our law that have to be worked through, shall we say? And, and so it's, it's just one of those things that we. Now, there's the history. So you had this influx of local regulation of weapon carrying. In response to that, the influx of more local regulation, the legislature and their wisdom decided that they didn't like local governments having that much authority. And so they addressed that in the prior legislative session. They passed an amendment to. Law, Title 45, Section 953. This lists the place, this lists out the places that a county or municipality can exert regulations on the carrying of weapons concealed or otherwise. Under one of the exemptions, we are allowed to regulate the carrying of a firearm. Meeting of a county, municipality, or the government body. At a political rally, parade, or official political meeting. I think that may be appropriate for these days. And then a non-firearm-related school, college, or professional athletic event. Those are the places. We use that first exception, the public park or. Broadly interpreted that as giving us authority to regulate the 10 or 15 locations that we set out. The legislature came back and exacted some refinements to that. Allowing individuals, citizens of this state, or a person licensed to carry a concealed pistol or revolver under the code sections that authorize that, anyone who is adversely affected by an ordinance or a posted written notice adopted by the county is able to then notify the Attorney General's office, and the AG's office will initiate an investigation to determine whether or. None of the circumstances. And they will use this, this prohibition on regulating beyond your authority, they will use that as the basis to determine whether or not this board would be in compliance. We received a letter, this, this law, by the way, this update, allowing for this investigation by the AG's office on the receipt of a written complaint, that went into effect July 1. He got, I received a letter from the Attorney General's office with a written complaint from a gentleman who lives in Senatobia. I don't recognize him, I hadn't seen him at any of our meetings, yet we have a written complaint that went in, and it suggests that while we don't have any inappropriate signage on any of our locations, we do have the ordinance that was adopted. Has suggested that we are infringing on his rights to carry, and he requested that a, an investigation ensue. I do not know. It's early, we're only talking about a matter of days since the notification came in to us, but it suggests that we, we probably do want to take a look at our ordinance and determine what, if anything, we wanted to. Here is something that you need to be aware of. The law allows, and I'll just read from the AG's letter so that we get it all on the record here, it's important to know that any elected county or municipal official. Being that the violation of the carrier's rights may be civilly liable in a sum not to exceed $1,000 plus all reasonable attorney's fees and costs incurred by the party bringing the suit. Public funds may not be used to defend or reimburse officials who are found by the court to have violated the statute. So there's some teeth in the law for. Carry that are found to be in violation, it's important you understand, the steps in the process are, a written complaint has to go to the AG, the AG does an investigation. The investigation reveals that there are some issues that need to be attended to, the ordinance is too broad, there are areas covered that shouldn't be covered, the signs don't comply with the law, et cetera, et cetera. You are then notified by the. The steps that you need to take to correct this, you have 30 days to make that correction. If you don't, the AG's office notifies the complainer, you may proceed with your lawsuit. The complaint has gone in, investigation is underway, so we have the opportunity today to discuss whether or not we want to get ahead of this. I've looked at our ordinance, and there are some issues with it in light of the new law, in light of what I have been able to interpret from the new law, there are some issues. They're not significant issues, but they are issues, one of them being that we don't set a timeframe. We just say you can't carry, period. And it's probably going to be difficult for us to be able to make that hold, while I think while we are in a meeting of this board, it is completely appropriate to say no open carry of weapons in here during a meeting. But it would not be otherwise appropriate to ban the carry while there. Where we probably need to refine our existing ordinance. So I think what we're suggesting today to you guys is to consider going ahead and just repealing the ordinance as it stands. We'll make that notification back to the AG's office that we've repealed it. And that notice will go out then to the person who's filed the written complaint, and I believe that that matter will be addressed. believe that that matter will be addressed then later. Come up with an ordinance that, with their help, seems to be in compliance.
That's clear and concise, that what they're looking for.
Gotcha. Did the legislature happen to mention themselves in this?
That's a good question. I don't know whether or not they banned the carrier, sealed carrier
Yes, sir, what do you, what you got there, Sheriff?
You cannot open carry while it's
So, no open carry
So, they got it, but we can't.
While they're in session
So, they can do that, but we can't.
Just, just while they're in
Anytime. So, basically, you can't walk into their building at any time with it. Unless, enhanced.
Unless it's enhanced.
Well, we can gamble a thousand dollars, I mean, that's only, what, two hundred each?
Plus attorney's fees.
Oh, well, okay.
No, I think that was each.
Each.
Don't drag me into
Yeah, don't draw, drag me into that one either.
Mr. President, that would be, that would be our recommendation.
Okay.
Just go ahead and repeal, and come back and re-lick the calf.
Well, I make, do I need to make the motion?
Yeah. We just need a motion, Jerry.
Per the calf?
Per the calf?
To repeal.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison to repeal this ordinance?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions?
Motion carries.
Mr. President, we've got four matters. We've got four matters, they're all nuisance properties, they're all for the same date, items B, C, D, and E under Section eight, my section. I would suggest one motion for each of the four, B, C, D, and E, setting public hearings on July thirty-one, twenty-fourteen, nine AM, for the Joseph Tucker nuisance property, the Judy Steen nuisance property, District two, and the Tommy Lee Thompson et al. nuisance property, District two.
District two, well covered.
Well, wait, now, that, I'm glad I don't live on Church three.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Bishop. What I'm wondering, is there any more District two nuisance properties out there at all? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. J.K. Stringer, County Administrator.
Thank you. Previously, to where I said that we paid the previous employee that is no longer with us out there twenty-five thousand dollars by contract, it was actually thirty thousand dollars by contract.
Thirty, okay.
I'd just like to correct that.
Thank you.
For the record. The first item is the claims document for four million, six hundred, seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-two cents.
Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop.
This is kind of an average now, huh?
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. President, is back to a familiar topic, which is the Motorola is here, and we're talking about the wireless communication We have moved down to where we are getting to pretty much what we want to do. And would like to, yeah.
Hey, Janice, would you go get wood, please?
Would you go get wood, please?
Thank you. I won't be here for this.
Yeah, left the building.
Yeah. But, pretty much what the purpose of the presentation this morning is to hopefully get a motion that we be allowed to enter into negotiations for a contract with Motorola. Not, not to approve the contract, that will come back for approval once it's a recommended contract that's been negotiated. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Bob, and he can tell you where we been since he was
Morning, sirs. I'm gonna pass these out, so y'all will have a copy of them. Follow along with me.
Thank you.
All right. We continue to go round and round, we've had several more meetings with the WCC. Scott Davis, Mr. Stringer, and myself have met and we discussed the items that we brought to y'all last time on the joining Misswinn. And I'll go through these kind of briefly. The system manager accessibility was one of the big issues where, you know, in the previous negotiations, we did not have that capability. The WCC Subcommittee has agreed to allow the Rankin County System Manager to oversee and monitor and maintain the functionality of the Rankin County system. The fees for Rankin County, or the fees levied to any entity by the state of Mississippi, most specifically to Rankin County include our municipalities or users on our system. The Rankin County and the WCC Subcommittee have agreed that should a fee be imposed by the WCC through the state legislator, that the Rankin County users will receive credit until a point that exceeds eight million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on our equipment is investing in enjoining the WCC system. In other words, should at some point, the WCC or the legislator adopt a policy where their charging fees for the radio, we will have a credit, and there'll be no charge until we exceed the eight million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that's what we're assuming, or making the estimate, that our cost and should a fee be imposed at any time in Rankin County, the WCC Subcommittee has agreed that the county will have the ability to install an M-three system controller, the main What that's saying is, if they impose a fee, Rankin County at some future time will have the option to buy a controller and go totally independent after we exceed the eight million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Accessibility, they have authorized, or agreed to authorize, an agent to service ability to service our sirens system. The WCC has agreed to provide Rankin County all necessary talk groups with the future expansion of these on the state system. If the Rankin County Board of Supervisors agrees to this system, we will present a plan for the, to the full Mississippi Wireless Communication Board for their approval. And this is joining with the plan, and basically, they've agreed to all of our, well, not all, I did put some things in there they were not agreeable to, but those were financial. Basically, they give us everything that we asked for, everything that we legitimately expected to get out of the agreement, which includes rates, which was also estimated to be about two, for them, it's four hundred thousand dollars every couple of years to upgrade, and they agreed to pay that fee also. So, that would include an upgrade for our system, saving us about two hundred thousand dollars every two year on the software upgrade. So, the plan, if we enjoin with the Misswinn plan, and I've got one is to enjoin the Misswinn system, and they, like I said, they've agreed to all the requirements, everything that we've asked for. Original cost of eleven nine million, six hundred and nine thousand, roughly one point, one million, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that is to join the Misswinn system. The standalone system for us to go completely independent of them, the numbers I've got is ten million, twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty Continuing on, on the next page, one of the items that we've got to address pretty quick is the new police stations being built at both Pearl and Richland. We've got to act pretty quick on a decision and moving forward on these because we have to have the new consoles installed at these police calls to install and reinstall at those agencies. Mr. Stringer asked for the non-infrastructure projected cost in equipment by agency, and we've got those broken down by agency. I don't know if y'all want me to go through each one of them, or am I gonna skip over to the next page, or?
Yeah.
And those, like I said, those estimates, and those are estimates, and when I say that, those are based on the numbers that we have now. Some of them will go down, and I'll give you an example. The sheriff's office continues to buy upgraded radios. So, the number that you're seeing here next two years, at the end of the two years when we cut the system on, that's what it's gonna cost. But each agency and each municipality continues to upgrade a portion of their radios over, over time, that number's gonna go down. So
Is, let me, let me get clear on this, is this price included with us purchasing these?
The cost for each agency, and that's, like I said, that's a high estimate.
Right.
That's based on their inventory that they have now, their radio inventory that they have now. A lot of agencies, you know, keep, you know, a half a dozen spare radios
Right.
available. Now, if they want to buy the high-end radios, that's what it's gonna cost them. Now, there's gonna be some lower model radios that in this, you know, on the, on the high-end radios.
And you've had a meeting with all the agencies, that's correct?
I have invited every agency that is on our system. We have contacted every agency, every person that is on our system, you know, and we've had numerous meetings over, you know, the past three years. And, you know, some agencies have been proactive in have told us, you know, hey, let me know when you need to cut it over, and we'll buy everything we need then. And that, so that's the very degree that we have on the, on the agency's response.
Do you have a hundred percent participation?
Well, we've had a hundred percent contact, I don't know, what do you mean participate? Everybody's on board with it, everybody understands
So far, we haven't told them they ain't gotta pay anything.
Yeah, the municipality.
Yeah, the reality has not set in. As long, as long as they understand the reality that it is coming.
Well, regardless of whether, if they are not, if we go with our then if Rankin County shuts down, then they have to get on the Misswinn system.
Right.
So, I mean
The, the four hundred thousand, the four hundred thousand in maintenance costs?
Yes, sir.
Is that, what is that?
Every, and I've got several Motorola folks here with me, and they may have to jump exactly correctly. About every two years, there's gonna be a system upgrade requirement on the system. So, every two years, they're gonna charge an additional on the system that, as big as the system is on the state that we're joining, it costs them approximately four hundred thousand dollars every two years. Independent, you know, that cost, that will be an optional cost whether we upgrade or not. But as new systems come out, that's just an upgrade cost that they had to pay every couple of years for them to upgrade their system. Is that right, Paul, or did I say that right?
Good morning.
The wireless communication upgrade every two years. So, as of now, they have a contract with Motorola, and all those upgrades are in that until twenty-seventeen, where at that time, you know, the maintenance and the software upgrades will renegotiate with them and that. So, savings for you guys that you don't have to pay.
If we had our own core, we wouldn't necessarily have to do those updates every two years.
You wouldn't have add a console, and they would have to do upgrades, then you would have to upgrade the system to be able to add new components at the different agencies.
Because right now, we don't, we haven't been able to pay that.
No, you don't have to on the system, the system today
Yeah.
There was releases, I would do releases for those probably about ten years ago, so there's no releases for the system that you have today. On the new the new releases, but we would say we only do every two years for the cost benefit.
Pearl, I thought they already purchased their equipment.
Pearl has, for their radios, so they only have about, I think it's about thirteen or so radios that they have in their inventory today that can be flashed. So, they're ready to basically go today.
Yeah.
Their consoles
They their console?
No, not yet, not yet.
The mayor's of different opinions.
They've had those Golda leads, I guess, and, you know, for a long time now. We've just, when, when they went to the Misswinn system and the Rankin County system several years ago, we actually did a patch on their consoles to give them that interoperability with the
Paying us then, or they operating off us, because the, I was told
Yeah, they're doing both.
They think they're operating off the state.
They're operating off both.
So, they're still paying us?
Yes.
So, whenever, if we go this route, is there a possibility that some of the, with the state system running their own, is it possible that some of the municipalities can just go straight to the state and leave us out?
You're actually as a whole, Rankin County, those agencies could have the interoperability and basically talk groups that can keep everybody still talking like they do today, okay? If they want to be able to be interoperable with the state, they can also do that, but as far as a whole, they would still be utilizing, they would still have to utilize your sites to get that coverage that they need in your county.
Okay.
But if they will footprint that you have with your existing sites in the county.
And I think one of the big differences is gonna be the difference between that agency purchasing a $1,200 for the for the water department.
There's a lot, so just on the breakout, we look through what is the most cost-effective way that you guys can get more of these users on, and you have a lot of radios that are in inventory that simply need a flash instead of spending, you know, the money for new radios. And you're also tying into the state, so you're alleviating that master site core piece, and you get the coverage, and then you also get to utilize the radios that can be flashed, so you're saving a lot of money by doing that, allowing those users to flash that to keep operating on your Rankin County sites.
So, is there a downside to us going through the state now?
No, sir, they've, they've pretty much agreed to give us exactly what we'd ask for. The one item, well, there was, there was two items, but one of them I didn't think they were gonna agree to. I had asked purchase us a core, they declined to obligate themselves to that. And the, the other item was on the sheriff's office, on the sheriff's side, the GPS system that the sheriff wanted, and it's an option that we've, that the sheriff has And it's an option that we've, that the sheriff has wanted. He thinks it's going to help him, you know, for the safety of his options. The state is putting that same system that we're going to install on this system. And they wanted to charge us a fee. And we haggled back and forth and I said, I, I need the, the investment that we would have had to make through the county. And then they would decline to charge us a fee. And they initially agreed to that. And then they came back and said, well, we don't know if the legislature is going to allow us to drop a fee. So we decided to just add that cost back in there and we'd be totally independent from the state as far as the GIS track.
So they're going to charge us for it?
No, sir.
You said they're going to add that cost back in there?
We just be independent?
Yeah, they wanted to add that cost back in there and I, I told them no. Yeah, the GIS will be independent and it'll be something that the sheriff can offer to the municipalities, you know, for officer safety and, and, you know, he may want to come up and talk about that. But the well, that's up to the sheriff and that's going to be pretty much kind of his slice on that, on the
There's some software we need to write.
Yeah, so on that, the state purchased a, same thing that you guys are purchasing with this whole bundle. It's a server that allows the radios to send that GPS information in and be transmitted back out to the agencies. So the state's looking at that and said, hey, this is a value add. We don't have any we came to them and said, hey, this total solution could include that GPS cost and, you know, without a charge. So the state said, we will allow you to have your own UNS server and own GPS solution without having to pay us to use ours. So that's where they negotiated on that. But they have, they offered that to Wallop and Fisheries and multiple agencies on necessarily have their own. So they're using the state, so that's where the state's looking at a value add fee for using that GPS service. But you all have your own.
What didn't you say that, you mentioned that last time you were here and that they had developed some software to be able to track where they're at?
Yes.
So we would still need that component, right? We would still need some software.
Case that over, if it's, you know, when we purchase it, it's in the system.
So it's a caucus column application that's all included in your proposal? That gives the radios with the GPS, like the sheriff department, the ability to actually track their users or track if they do a search, track where they are, where they've been. But that's all included in your proposal with the application, the software and the server to do it.
Until we get it just about paid for and then the whole system
Brian, you understand that?
Is that?
Yeah, but the big huge thing is officer safety, a full pursuit that goes off in the wood. There's a pinpoint exactly where he's at. And if all the walk-up coffees have this, even investigators, administration, everybody will go right to them. And plus it'd be great on like a manhunt, getting people stung around and knowing where everybody's at.
And on the last page there, it gives the, basically this is the console included in this price for each municipality. Richland's two hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty-seven. Brandon's three hundred and one thousand, five twenty-one. Pearl's three hundred and one thousand, six forty-two. Flowood is three hundred and one thousand, five twenty-one. And then the sheriff's office, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six thirty-seven.
A new station under construction? And are they planning on installing this new equipment in their new facility?
Yes, sir.
Who else did you say?
Richland.
Richland.
Yeah, Pearl and Richland are both expecting and anticipating to get into their new police stations before the first of the year.
Has there been any other municipalities?
There are several that, that have them, the radios. And I mean, it, it just depends on, you know, the functionality and, and, you know, who's got it.
Wasn't that the one where they, I mean, for their police departments? Have their phones still have to purchase them?
Some of them, some of them have that because that's what they want. They want the ability and, like I said, now how they spread them out, that's a, you know, administr narcotics guys need to talk to, you know, multiple agencies and multiple counties. They'll have those type of radios. Some of the administrative guys, some of the detectives, you know, that, that work across jurisdictional boundaries, they'll have them. But, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sheriff, but the, the typical patrolman is, is probably not going to have the higher-end radio. Even with the volunteers, we've got some volunteers that have some of the radios, some of the high-end radios. But, you know, the, the overwhelming majority is going to be the lower-end radios because, you know, it's just a matter of time before it gets, you know, torn up.
Yeah, I understand, right? You got to purchase the high-end ones to get the encryption?
Uh, the high-end one, I think each
I think this new system encryption's not even going to be an issue, it's all going to be digital. A scanner can't pick it up or anything like that.
Oh, I thought it was the handhelds themselves.
The whole system's going to be more or less encrypted.
Oh, so they, we don't necessarily have to go buy those.
I know it is, I got four for administration, but we can talk to anybody in the state on them and talk to, you know, that's the whole thing. But we still can't talk to Heinz County for an emergency. Hopefully this is going to fix all this. We have the radio, we can talk.
Thing with, with Heinz County. I'm just, I'm not guaranteeing any connectivity at all.
There's something about that water.
I'm just not making any promises on that. That's
Will this, will this clear any, cover any dead spots that we might have existing in the county?
Yes, sir. The, the new coverage maps, and I brought y'all some, some books. I got everybody a book in here. Brother, as deep as you want to get. How, how deep do you want to go? On each one of these.
It was kind of a yes or no.
Oh, that was a big.
Yeah, yeah, the, they're big tests.
I see that. We even got a hardback.
Had one of, uh, each one has got a illustrated map, just using our towers and also and that's, you know, and everything that we've wanted was to catch those towers that are just outside. And I'll give you an example, you know, the tower in Scott County coming back into Leesburg and Lake Harbor area. The, the county in Sharon, Madison County over in Sharon, beaming back across into the Leesburg area. The south, in Southwest coming back into, and we've also got the tower out by them coming back across. So there's no doubt that, that those are going to help us with the coverage. And also, and as we explained to the WCC, where those guys were lacking the ability on I-20, they had several dead spots inside the heart of Rankin County. They're going to get increased coverage. So it's, it's basically a win-win for both of us.
And in a roundabout way, the answer to the question would be yes.
Yes. Well, I had to, I had to say something to give her time to pass them out.
You know, when we looked at the eleven million dollar, that was integrating in with the MISWINS system, which are on core, and giving you the additional coverage. So when we did the studies and looked at the studies of, hey, we don't have to have the integrated pieces. You can join in with the MISWINS system. That still gives you the expanded footprint, so it does make your coverage a lot better in Rankin County. We're going to do the test when we do the system, actually the test on the system, which we will. We'll do that based on just your tower sites for the ninety-five percent portable coverage. And then with the MISWINS, of course, that'll overlay in any area that you have.
So you used tests before and after?
Yes, sir.
And like I said, if we move forward today, we've still got a lot of work to do. My interpretation skills of the writings and speech of so I have to defer to our attorney on several occasions. We've still got a couple of things we need to work out with the MOU. We've still got to move forward. This is the subcommittee that we've been meeting with and negotiating with. We still have to appear before the entire WCC committee and ask them for a vote to move forward. Have never been declined based on their recommendation to the entire board. So that we're going on the assumption that everything that we've agreed to will move forward and be passed by the WCC. So, and that's, like I said, we've still got some legal stuff to clear up. We've still got to jump over the hurdle with the WCC and elongated fight.
Don't see anything about the school on here.
The school has, we know, oh, three hundred and thirty radios, portables in the buses and another, I think, fourteen that are distributed out throughout the county. Is that right? Supposed to get those numbers for me, that's why.
So the majority of, there's three hundred and forty-five radios that the school has that they do not have to replace. So they can actually do flashes. So what we looked at in the proposal, we also included five hundred and forty-seven radios in this prize that we can flash with no additional cost to whatever, you know, you know, the schools or proposal includes those flashes also. So the school has, I think, about two hundred and forty-five, I've got it on that sheet how many can be flashed. So that way, they just have to basically get their radios reprogrammed to P25. They don't have to buy new radios.
So they won't have any cost?
No, it's up to you, it's your discretion.
That's remain, I mean, each agency, there's going to be
Five hundred flashes?
Five hundred and forty-seven.
Five hundred and forty-seven.
And then these are based on, you know, Rankin, these are, well, these are numbers that I've asked for, for Rankin County-owned property.
Five forty-seven, not five fifty? I mean, how'd you come up with forty-seven?
Motorola calculator. Man, I just use the inventory. You know, just strictly county-owned assets. And that includes, you know, the sheriff's office, board supervisors, our road crew, our EOC, our county-owned fire trucks. And that's what I base those numbers off, including reservoir fire.
And could that five hundred number be just for the sake of, I mean, I understand the technology, but for the sake of
One of the things that we've looked at, and, and that's, that is also an option as we upgrade. And this, this is another thing that came up. As we continue to upgrade, as each agency continues to upgrade, we also continue to negotiate with each agency as they upgrade to pass those radios or make those radios available to the volunteer fire departments. So as we upgrade, each agency upgrades. And I'll give you an example, our mobile command, we've got to upgrade the eight radio radios that we can pass down to the volunteer departments that'll work fine. We just don't, I just want to make sure that we've got the capability on the mobile command where if the sheriff's using it, you know, he's got access or if we switch over to fire, that we've got, you know, the, the capability to switch back and forth. The radios that we have now don't have that ability, but they'll run fine, fine on a fire truck. Agencies continue to upgrade and their inventory, you know, they're upgrading their radios. We can pass those back to the fire departments. And that's what we've been doing, you know, with each municipality and each agency we can. We actually have calls into Lee County who did an upgrade a few months ago, you know, to try and get, you know, radios from them. So every time somebody in the state upgrades, we're trying to get those radios and get those, uh, fire departments in touch with those guys. And they, they've had some pretty good deals. I think, and Scott may correct me if I'm wrong, when Pearl upgraded their radios, two or three volunteer fire departments in the county bought every older radio that they had. And I think they paid, and I, I don't know which one, but it was either twenty dollars a radio or a hundred dollars a radio. Was it a hundred? Okay, a hundred dollars a radio versus twelve, fourteen hundred. So that's how we're, you know, operating with those and
Okay. All right.
Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to, you know, recognize that obviously Bob, Scott, Motorola people put in a lot of work on this. And always being concerned with that we had an adequate emergency communication system and also that we do it at the right price. Now, as I said, what I'm going to ask for, I would recommend and ask for your vote that we go ahead and enter into on a contract. The contract will be brought back before the board for approval, obviously, and discussions. But at the same time, we still have to deal with the financing. The financing here, the nine point six million dollars, as I had indicated previously, we currently still owe about two point four million dollars on the financing for the towers. And we're paying about six hundred thousand dollars a year to do that. If we take, if we finance about five to six million dollars of this, meaning finance it, we will continue just to see us paying out of the nine-one-one funds, that's six hundred thousand dollars a year going into the you know, it'll, it'll just be kind of level funding. We'll pay off the towers, we'll begin to pay for this, we'll continue to expend about six hundred thousand dollars a year on this. But the question, but the decision has to be made is if we, do we buy that nine point six million dollars down using the four point seven five million dollars that we discussed before that accumulate and reimbursements, et cetera. So I'm not asking for a motion, a decision on that today. But the time we approve the contract, we'll have to decide that. Anticipate that what we will do is Motorola certainly offers a financing option on what they're doing. But at the same time, if we're borrowing the money, we may well want to go out to the local community and say what type of deal they would give us on lending us five million dollars, six million dollars. So we're not there, so with that background, what I would ask for now is a motion to go ahead and enter into negotiations with Motorola for a contract for this new system.
Hoop, you know, we, we have these people looking at our finances. Why don't we wait until we have for sure know which direction we're going to go and we're paying for it?
Well, okay, and that's going on right now. As a matter of fact, I think and it is to be not only this, but the entire capital investment
Right.
we need to make. So you're absolutely right.
So we could really wait till next meeting then?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, as I said, I'm not asking for the decision on the financing, but I'm just giving you that background.
We wouldn't have to make any decision today, really could wait till next meeting on
Well, I, I don't think that we need to wait to, for the authority to go ahead and enter because there's nothing being approved other than the authority of the boards and yes, we want to move forward with this system. And, and nothing has been signed. It doesn't obligate you, but
It doesn't obligate us, wait, say it again, doesn't obligate us to what?
It doesn't obligate you to spend any money right now.
Basically, it's not a negotiation with Motorola.
Nothing other than we know that we are negotiating a contract with Motorola to come back to you for the decisions and before any money has been spent. And even at that time, if you say no, stop, we can stop.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah. Yeah.
One of the reasons we need action from the board is for me to move any further with the WCC, I have to have approval from this board and noted in the minutes to move forward. If not, I mean, the subcommittee, it's all over. But for me to make any kind of presentation, I have to act, or Mr. Stringer, or whichever one of us, you know, goes up there has to act with the authority, you know, understanding that the board has authorized us to move forward. Second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions?
Yeah, it would have helped if we would have not just got all this, like, right now and vote on it right now. You know, I think we're all know we have to do it. I just hate anything being, you know, presented the same day and vote on it the same day.
Any more questions?
We must still have time for the contract review.
Well, that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm...
Before we vote on the schedule, we just got to move forward.
We're moving forward, but we're not committing?
We're not committing. Forward to enter the negotiations with Motorola for a contract for us to come back to look at.
And we don't like that contract, we don't have to do anything.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Any additional business to be discussed?
Mr. President, the attorney has one item he would just like to brief the board on to bring you up to date on maybe what somebody knows.
Okay.
And you'll understand that comment when you...
You guys in the loop on a couple of things that could potentially end up being discussed publicly, and I didn't want you guys not to have the benefit of some information before you start hearing things publicly. And this has to do with our U.S. Senate primary, the issues that resulted from that election. And you're fully aware that there has been a good bit of publicity about lawsuits filed by or on behalf of the losing candidate. And one of those is by an organization that is out of Texas. It's a 5-0-1-C-4 organization, it's a political organization, and they, it's called True the Vote. And they have filed a federal court case. They named the Secretary of State for the state of Mississippi, they named the Mississippi Republican Party, and they named nine counties around the state. That case was assigned after it was filed to Judge Henry Wingate. Judge Wingate convened an emergency hearing among all of the counsel that had entered appearance at that point and read a prepared statement indicating that everyone associated with the lawsuit, all legal counsel needed to be aware that it's the direct personal intervention of Senator Cochran on his behalf with President Reagan in 1985. And having heard that, the lawyers out of Texas for True the Vote decided that they didn't want Judge Wingate hearing their case. And so Judge Wingate was forced, under the federal rules of civil procedure, he's forced to recuse himself. That case is basically at a standstill until a judge has actually been appointed to substitute for Judge Wingate. And I just commented to Colonel Stringer and Ms. Laura that they're going to... State of Mississippi, who hasn't had some sort of direct personal involvement from Senator Cochran.
Over that many years.
They may have a hard time finding a judge.
So could they bring somebody from out of state?
You know, I don't know what the rules are. The Fifth Circuit, which is based out in New Orleans, will actually, in essence, control that selection process. I think it's conceivable that Mississippi, Louisiana, and Texas could in fact hear that case. But all parties must agree on that judge. If there's any issue involving partiality of any kind, it's subject to being challenged by any party. So anyways, way too early in the process. We may come back at some point with you guys. Quickly, that's federal law. It doesn't involve state law. It's completely focused on a piece of federal legislation that has to do with voter registration. And so there is, in my opinion, there is an effort to sort of combine or mix together election-related documents, calling some things that are more in the nature of election documents, that is, documents that are created as a result of an election versus voter registration. So the issue in that case is going to be what documents are voter registration-type documents and what documents are election-related documents. Able to show one or the other of those, they don't get, they're not going to get anywhere with that lawsuit. All right? So that's the first one. The other lawsuit that has been filed, Judge Chapman has been assigned the case. Mr. McDaniel is listed individually as the plaintiff, Chris McDaniel versus Becky Boyd. He sued our circuit clerk, in her passing circuit clerk. He is not seeking any sort of damages, no sort of monetary recovery. He's asking for what's called a mandamus, Latin, we get the word mandate from it. It's basically, he's saying, this person in this office is not doing something that they are required by law for her to do that. That's what the basis of the petition is. What he's asking is to be given open unfettered access to our poll books. Ms. Becky is by law required to hold possession of those and to keep those and to keep them safe and free from any sort of interference. Under state law, she's required after the election is over, by law, and only candidates and their representatives and the parties, if it's a primary process, the parties are allowed to have access to that. There may be some misunderstanding. There is a misunderstanding, I can tell you from personal experience. Folks in the public believe that they have the right to go and inspect the poll books. That is not the law. They are not open and available to the public. But they are available to the parties, representatives of the parties, and to the candidates themselves. All right? But there is a... And with the assistance of the Secretary of State's office and the instructions that we've been, that we've received, I've worked closely with Ms. Becky to make sure that no one got access to those poll books except by following the process. And the process includes the removal of personally identifying information of our voters before we allow an inspection. That's the law. So our registered voters would agree that it's reasonable that their personal information not be displayed in such a way that it could be then later given out to who knows who, who knows where it's going to go. And so there's a process to sort of prevent that disclosure, that information from happening. The individuals who've been wanting to get a... Did the fact that, that there is a process. That process also includes, it's not just the removal, but it's also having to pay for the staff time and the costs associated with doing those redactions. And so there has been a, my observation, a reticence to want to have to pay for that. Does that make sense? So instead of just... Asked a judge to order that the poll books be laid out before them, no redaction, no cost, just lay it out and let us go. And so we don't agree with that position, and we've taken a counter position, and we feel good about ultimately there being an order that allows us to follow the process that is set out under Mississippi law.
So are you going to represent us?
For the time being. On the federal court case, once that gets moving forward, with the esoteric nature of that law, of those arguments, with it being a federal law, we may be coming back to you guys. My hope would be that the nine election commissions that have been sued will have an opportunity maybe to go together, combined, and come forward with a recommendation on legal counsel who can represent all of our interests together.
Well, that'll blow their budget out, huh?
All right. Thank you, Craig. Any additional, any more additional business?
Yeah, I got something. I was just sitting here thinking, you know, we've talked about multipurpose building, and, you know, I see a lot of discussions being about the question, it keeps coming back to management and whatever. And with all that, you know, I can understand that, and I see we've got some things... Other little things like that you've talked about. But all in all, I don't, I'd like to add to the motion, I add to the agenda, a motion that says that we keep the multipurpose building as it is, we continue operating it as it is until, and at a time as soon as possible, we'll look at... And tweak all these little things. But in the end, we still got the same, it's not a question about whether we're going to operate the building or not operate the building. So I would like to go ahead and put that part to rest as a motion that we are going to operate the building, and then we're going to tweak it out, obviously, as some of the things that you've asked. So I'd like to add that to the agenda that we're going to continue with multipurpose building as we have at this, up to this point, and then we will enhance...
Obviously, well, that requires a motion. We're still already on the building, and it's going to continue to operate like it is.
I mean, I thought all that was off the table now, that we committed to keeping the building and operating it.
I mean, if that's the case, then the motion would be made, but I, wouldn't have to be made, but I was under the impression there was still some question whether we're keeping the building or not. The people have questioned, are we keeping it or not?
You know, the lawyer may want to jump in here, but, you know, I don't know if there's a problem with the motion or if there's a, you know...
May not be a need for it, if we're going...
Yeah, or if, you know, you say, want to go on record that the board agrees. That's basically what the motion would do, to go on record that the... Building would continue to be county-operated as for its current mission, or, and to be expanded. In other words, and I think I understand what Mr. Morrison is saying, is there's, may still be some confusion out there on whether or not we are considering moving it, shutting it down, or whatever. What we're doing is looking to the future, that the board wants, you know, to go on record to saying, we are continuing with it in its current capacity with future enhancements.
Well, that's true, and I think that would clear up some things, because, you know, initially we had set a time we would vote on the building, the first of July.
Well, that's when we, that's when we needed a committee to come back.
No, no, but it was, it was a talk about voting on it, because we were going to make sure everybody knew we were going to vote on it. So if we weren't going to vote on keeping or not keeping it, then it wasn't a big... People see, the discussion's always been, when are you going to vote on it? And, you know, you said, and we've told everybody we weren't going to vote on it until we notified them. What if we're going to, if we're going to continue operating it, then we, there's not a vote as far as that goes. So, and I think that's what, what you're saying, Mr. Stringer, is right. There has been some confusion out there of, and I think that's the reason, because we did put in the wording that we were going to vote on it on a particular day. Then we kind of, you know, we waited because there was going to be some answers to be, questions to be answered. But those... Keeping it or not. So if that's the case, then...
So your motion is to just...
To solidify the fact that we are keeping the...
All right, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop, to add this item to the agenda. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
All right, now, I'd like to make the motion that we're going to keep the multipurpose building, operate it, county will operate it, and at this...
Second.
...time. As we see how we need to do that, budget allows.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Mr. President, before we have a vote, can I just jump in here? I want to make one clarification.
Sure.
And that is this. The decision, whatever the decision is of the board, is operable with this board. I want you guys, I just want to remind you, and also wanted to state for the benefit of those present today, that there are decisions that this board can make that do not carry over to successor boards. I want to be, I wanted to remind everyone, yourselves included, that...
You're putting us on notice.
Yes, that what is decided, what you decide here today is operable. That if there is a successor board at some point that occupies those seats, your decision today would not be binding on that successor board.
I think that goes with anything.
It does.
Any decision, not just this one.
And that's really, Jared, that's more for the benefit of those who may be listening today. And just as a reminder to all of us, that there are certain, that there are certain things that this board can do that obligate for a lengthy period of time, waste management contracts would be a good example, how you can bind successor boards. This is not the kind of decision that would bind a successor board. So I just wanted to remind everybody about that.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Craig. All right, any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign.
Mr. President, I think Laura has some budget-type of details.
I just wanted to know about workshops. We only have three meetings, that's the 31st, the 4th, and the 15th, before I will have to have things to the paper that says when we're going to set our budget here and what our proposed budget is and our tax levy. The 15th will be on a Friday, and I'll have to have it on a Monday. So after that date, it will be hard to do. That's only three. I can have preliminary figures for y'all by next week sometime, providing I get all my...
Well, how this year went by...
And we could take a look at it and just give you an overview of what we've got and where we're going for this year. So is there a time next week that we...
Well, you want to move fast. Just pick it out.
Talk about putting it on the table and need it right then, right there.
Well, we have two weeks until the 31st, and so that's going to be pushing us then. So I know, especially if you want to meet with any department heads after you've heard the preliminary figures and everything.
I'd suggest Janice look at our schedules and kind of...
See, we don't come back for two weeks until the 31st.
The 31st, so when do you want to meet?
Well, I want y'all to tell me a time that's good for y'all, and I'll have everything ready.
Monday?
She's talking about sometime during the week of the 21st.
Through the 25th.
The 21st, next, next Monday.
It's a Monday, yes.
So one day next week, morning or afternoon, it doesn't matter.
Most good for you. Yeah, I'll work it in either day.
22nd?
22nd's better than me.
Morning, afternoon?
Late afternoon.
Late afternoon, I mean, it's according to how long it's going to be.
Or early morning.
Let's, let's start earlier in the morning.
I'd rather do one or the other, not just send them in the day, either early or late.
6 o'clock, good with y'all?
That's fine with me.
PM or AM?
AM.
Tuesday, Tuesday AM?
Tuesday AM.
8 o'clock?
8 o'clock.
That's fine. That's fine.
Now, you approve that, Janice?
She can put it on her schedule for us.
You know, Janice doesn't approve the schedule, it doesn't happen.
She's putting it on her schedule. Don't put on it. You know, you have to go through Janice to get it on schedule. Okay. All right. Any addition, more additional business to be discussed?
Yeah, I got one thing I need to do. Yeah, I got one thing I need to do. Dale and I met last week at Pearl School. They got a little drainage issue they need help with behind their junior high, and the superintendent forgot. But they need it done before school starts. So I'd like to add it to the agenda so we can go ahead and get it. Dale, I don't know if he'll get it before August or not, but it's not a big project. How long you think it'll take you, Dale?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison to add this item to the agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
I'd make motion to approve Dale to do some drainage work at the junior high.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. More additional business?
Hope not.
Okay. Till the 22nd at 8:00 AM. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
I'm not here by that age. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, y'all just go ahead, you know. Hey, Bob.
I can assure you, we will.